All right, well, good evening, everybody. It is six twenty P M. We unfortunately had some technical difficulties. We were in the Rothrey Center and we had no sound. Luckily, Brian caught it, and so we're gonna start this meeting over again. So it is now six twenty P M. And I call this governing, regular governing board meeting to order. All board members are present, and representing the district is interim superintendent, Mrs. Terry Rumble, and Bonnie Gomez. And can I get an adoption of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
And now, second, Beth.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes five zero. All right, it's this time, would you please join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so next item on our agenda would be board meeting minutes not previously approved, and that would be the minutes of the regular meeting of November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I motion that we accept the minutes from the regular meeting of November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes five zero. Our next item on our agenda would be information-only items, and tonight we'll start off with summary of current events with interim superintendent, Mrs. Terry Rumble.
So, good evening again, everyone. To our president and members of the board and to our Sierra Vista community. Again, before I begin tonight's updates, I want to remind everyone that next week, all of our schools and district offices will be closed. We hope our families and students and staff enjoy a restful, safe, and happy Thanksgiving break. And again, thank you for choosing Sierra Vista Unified School District. Pueblo del Sol Elementary School recently welcomed Sierra Vista City Councilman, Mr. Mark Rodriguez, who brought tremendous energy and inspiration to their students. He was joined by members of his city youth council, and together they met with the Pueblo del Sol's Student Council to discuss leadership and the importance of positively impacting one's community. The youth council members shared their personal experiences, the opportunities that they've had while serving, and how growing up in Sierra Vista has fueled their passion for giving back. It was an encouraging and empowering conversation that left the P D S students motivated and excited about their own leadership journeys. I wanted to let you all know about a wonderful event that's taking place tomorrow evening. Our Sierra Vista Unified School District Therapy and Health Services Department, including our speech, our occupational and physical therapy and nursing programs, are hosting a special family outreach event called Harvesting Health Sensory Experience, Wednesday, November nineteenth, again, so tomorrow, four thirty to six thirty over at the atria at the Rothrey Education Center. Things that families can expect if they attend. Our community members, creative make-and-take activities, hands-on sensory experiences, educational demonstration, just access to all of our expert therapists and our health professionals to be able to ask questions, opportunities to connect with other families and staff as well. This event is open to everyone and offers a meaningful way to better understand sensory needs in a supportive, engaging environment. A little bit of news from Wichita Mountain Elementary. The National Elementary Honor Society is hosting a coat drive now through December twelfth of two thousand and twenty-five. So you can feel this evening, it's chilly outside. They are collecting new or clean, gently-used coats for those in need, and they definitely appreciate the generosity of the community in helping them support families, our local families. Town and Country Elementary School, they will probably host their A Parade on Friday, the twenty-first, beginning at eight fifteen A M. Every classroom has created its own quote "A" artwork, because they got that letter grade to celebrate and brag a little bit about being the second-highest-performing elementary school in the county. So congratulations to the entire Road Runner team. So that'll be something fun. Another fun thing, there's always so many things going on within our district. Also tomorrow evening at seven P M. over in the lecture hall, Buena will premiere seven brand-new student-produced short films created in just nine days. The theme this year is the Meeting of Friendship. Admission is five dollars, and awards will be presented for the top three judge-selected films, as well as an Audience Choice Award. So you can come out and support our talented young filmmakers. Our Colts Flag Football Team travels to Chapparrell High School also tomorrow for the Final Four matchup. A win will send our team to the championship, and we are incredibly proud of their hard work and wish them all the best of luck. On November twentieth at seven P M. in the Little Theater, Buena Theater presents its studio showcase, featuring student-selected pieces from the fall semester. Admission is free, and everyone is welcome to attend. Also coming soon, Buena Fine Arts is presenting A Christmas Carol. It says, "Let nostalgia fill your heart as this timeless tale of Ebenezer Scrooge and the ghosts who visit him is brought to life" in a clever five-person adaptation by Patrick Barlow. It's filled with laughter, warmth, and a touch of holiday magic. This fresh Christmas carol rendition invites you to rediscover the spirit of compassion and change before it's too late. And December fourth and fifth, that's when it'll be held, seven P M. Client Center for the Performing Arts. Tickets are seven dollars, available online or at the door. This production is sure to bring magic and meaning of the holiday season to life. And again, thank you again to our students, our staff, our families, and the entire Sierra Vista community. Together, we are truly achieving excellence together. So, that's what I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Rumble. All right, and we'll move on to board members, and tonight we'll start with Mrs. Rochford.
Well, I have nothing to say, except that I do wish everybody a wonderful holiday time. Thanksgiving and Christmas are coming up, and just enjoy, enjoy the break.
Thank you, Mrs. Rochford, and we'll move on to Mr. Conroy.
Well, I had an opportunity to go over to Town and Country and be with the preschool children last, this past week, and had a great time with them. Kids were pretty attentive, but I will say that the teachers do have their hands full over there. They keep them busy all day long, so, but it was a good, it was a good opportunity for me to spend some time with the kids and with the teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Conroy, and now we'll move on to Mrs. Sheriff.
I have nothing to report, but I do wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving break next week.
Same here. Have a peaceful and well-deserved Thanksgiving break, and everyone just enjoy your family and come back recharged.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. And I'd just like to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I hope you have a great time and a little rest, and hopefully you don't eat too much.
All right, we'll move on to our presentation and awards. And tonight, that's gonna be our perception survey results, and that's gonna be presented by Darren Seber.
And Darren, you are muted, sir.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, good evening.
Okay, great, good evening. It's nice to be back. I'm going to be presenting your third, third year of your parent's and staff survey results. Is my tone up for you?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm excited to be in year three. As you, as you recall, the first year I reported these results for you, that was your, kind of your baseline year. And then last year I came back, and we made some nice progress from year one to year two. And I'm excited for the board to know that in most areas in year three, you continue to improve further. So these are two very favorable reports. Not every area grew, a couple areas regressed, but largely, the majority of areas grew, and some grew remarkably. So, without further ado, I'm gonna start with the parent survey report, and then we'll compare this year's results to last year's, and then we'll share the staff report. So, a reminder, this is how these presentations go. I'm gonna give you brief background about the company for anybody streaming, listening in, that's new to us, and then we'll get right into your survey results and analysis, and I'll take any questions from the board. So, again, we're School Perceptions. For twenty-three years, we've been doing independent research for school districts, so you can gather, organize, and use data to make strategic decisions on behalf of your staff, parents, and students. We've conducted over three million of these surveys in all fifty states and five foreign countries, and we've helped over thirteen hundred districts navigate strategic planning and referendum planning, building improvements, construction projects, things of that nature. Tonight, we're talking about your parent survey, and we had a survey deadline of October twenty-seventh. You had three hundred eighty-eight parents take the survey for an eleven percent participation rate, which our, kind of our company cutoff for reliability is, is ten percent. So we were pleased to see that you were slightly above that. As we talk about your survey results, we are able to disaggregate your results by building, by building-by-building results. Tonight is a summary of all the results through the eyes of the parents, but I've provided district leadership. It's been fun to see Terry in her new role, because she's been beside me from the beginning when we first met. And she was provided with documents that have the data site-by-site, building-by-building. But this was the, the distribution of the respondents by building. And this was your distribution of parent responses by grade level. Remarkably balanced, a lot of twelve percents in there in all grade levels, quite equitably represented. One of the other ways that we can study your results, we can do it by building, by grade level, we can do it by support program. Are they, are they part of your free or reduced lunch program? Gifted and Talented Program, Special Education Program? We can drill down and look for satisfaction within any of these subcategories, including racial background. And so let's, let's talk about our findings. Just a reminder to the board, we use a five-point Likert rating scale. We're seeking as many fives as possible, strongly agree. The way we word things, we're seeking agreement, but people are given the opportunity to strongly agree, disagree, or strongly disagree. And I'll remind the board what's, what's, what's missing here. We do not operate three. If they don't know, or the question doesn't apply to them, we don't give it any point value. They can select it, but they're not telling you anything further about that question. So we, they can click it, but it has no point value. We're measuring leanings, we're measuring people that have feelings about the question for you. So, this is your summary slide that you've seen previously, and I'm excited to report, this is, these are the indexes. So there's roughly thirty questions on the parent and the staff survey, and, and five or six questions feed each of these indexed areas. How informed the parents feel, how included they feel, the educational excellence in the district, the atmosphere that their child is experiencing, and their overall family experience. What I'm pleased to report, when you take all the scores in each of those indexes, all five areas grew from last year to this year. So the first column shows you this year's summary scores of all the scores in that index. The next column to the right shows you last year, and then you see percentage change. So, that was exciting to see, that all five overarching summary areas improved. But what the board will probably find most useful, and I think this was the case last year, is we do an exercise where I try to efficiently go through each of the questions on the survey. So, let's start out by talking about the leadership and communication question. There were three questions related to leadership in question. District administrator, doing what it takes to make our district successful. We have this year's percent agreement. How many gave you four or five? Seventy-one percent. Then the next column over is the cumulative score of all the respondents who gave you ones, twos, fours, and fives. Then the third column is last year's agreement percent, the percent that gave you four or five, and then last year's score, culminating with percentage change. So before I go any further, do those five columns make sense? We're comparing the first two columns are this year, second two columns last year, and then we calculate your percentage change for you. Are we good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, while I said almost every area grew, we started out a little bit disappointing, because there's two of the questions that regressed right at the beginning. But I would tell you, there's very few of these in these two reports. So, we made progress on how district administration is viewed through the eyes of parents. District direction ever so slightly, only one one-hundredth of a point. So I'm not gonna lose a lot of sleep over this, I hope you don't either. It stayed very much the same. And the school board's score regressed a bit, from three point nine, three point three-nine to three point three-zero. As we proceed through the survey, though, there's other scores that grew nicely. So, how would you rate communications from the school? Last year, it was a two point seven-nine, this year a two point nine-three for a five percent growth score. This year, again, we asked the question, and this isn't dramatically different from last year. We asked the parents how you like to receive communication from the school, and this is largely the same. They like the convenience of emails, those automated phone calls, but then, they like meetings with teachers and administrators, or to go to the school website, or to go to the, the school parent portal communication system, followed by district newsletters and Facebook. Then, for future planning, we asked them to live in your shoes as a district administration, school board. For future planning, we asked them, what would be the top four areas to focus on for the future? Knowing this list has twenty-four items on it, we asked them to pick four, so they had to live in your shoes where you can't have, can't have it all, because the money is not infinite. This really tells you what's most important to your parents. And at the top of the list, recruiting and retaining a high-quality staff, followed by school safety and security. And then, third on the list, preparing for the, the workforce of the trades. And then so on through the list. I'll flip through those, so you can see, we typically encourage districts to focus on the top four or five. But it is interesting to see other things that are on the list. Student behavior typically is top two with a lot of the reports I give. That tells me that parents aren't as worried about behavior in your schools. They're more worried about you being a strong staff and having security practices, and correcting them within the trades. Other things on the list, mental health services, communication, credit opportunities, and then they start to descend from there. And these aren't necessarily things that are unimportant to them. It just means that they're lower on the list compared when asked to pick four. And then we get to things like onsite childcare and transportation towards the bottom of the list. So let's talk about the question-by-question exercise that we've done for you every year. So, again, using the same reporting format, all of these school experience questions that the parents answered, we ranked by highest percentage change, most favorably changing, to lowest. So this should go quite efficiently going forward. So as you can see, my child gets help, gets help when they need it. That grew by an admirable six point four percent from last year, three point five-seven, to this year's three point oh. Know that as a company, we get pretty excited when the entire parent populace sees growth by two to three percent. Well, you're doubling that in many of these areas. I'm satisfied with, satisfied with our school's efforts to address bullying. A profound six point one percent change. Updated on how my child is doing at school, five point nine percent. I'm satisfied with how much my child is learning, five point eight percent. So many good scores here that many districts would envy seeing this kind of progress. I have opportunities to provide feedback to the school and the teachers. The school provides opportunities for parental involvement. I feel my child's school is safe and secure, a nice five point five percent growth. School communication, timely and transparent, five percent. Healthy culture at school, four point seven percent growth. The school has high expectations for my child, four point four. My child feeling safe at school, three point one percent. And now we're getting into more traditional growth scores. After all those questions, these are what we would more typically see, two point eight. My child breaks a school rule, breaks a rule at school, they're treated fairly. Very tough question to do well in, because what is fair in the eyes of parents? Two point eight percent growth. School staff treat my child with dignity and respect, two point eight percent growth. And then, few that are more modest growth. Most days, my child enjoys going to school but moving the right direction. School facilities are clean and well-kept. And then, as we wrap up the parent survey, we ask some other questions. The overall amount of homework my child is asked to complete is? Sixty-eight percent, just right. Eleven percent, too little. Nine percent, too much. We asked, are you, how many of your children in your families are your children participating in co-curricular activities? Sports, musicals, things of that nature? Fifty, fifty-seven percent said they are. Oh, and then we have some other questions that we still need to report on. I have at least one school staff member I feel comfortable contacting when I have an idea or concern. Nice one point one percent growth. Overall, my child is able to handle the emotional challenges of school. That grew by a few hundreds. And then I feel welcome in my child's school. Grew by seven tenths of a percent. So, in to summary, just like we did last year, we're gonna give you your five scores that had the lowest, five areas that had the lowest scores. I'll pause here so you can look at this list. But all well above the median of three point zero. And your five areas with the highest score. Another way to look at your findings this year, we're gonna show you the five areas that had the, the lowest percent change as far as the parents' experience at the school. It is very rare when I can report all of the parent experience questions grew, but that was the case this year for Sierra Vista, and we're really impressed. Super exciting. And then, the five areas with the most dramatic change. And finally, our closing question is always, on a scale of zero to ten, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? Three point eight percent change there as well. Previous score, last year, six point seven-eight, this year? You got above seven, seven point zero-four. What's noteworthy is that score would be even higher, but you had twenty-two percent people. Let's go right in that neutral range, which is, this is the only question on our survey tool where we allow that neutral score. We take away the three on all of our other questions, but we do allow it on this one question. But I'd like to point out for the board, over one in four give you a perfect ten. Thirty-five percent give you a nine or a ten, and fifty, fifty-three percent give you an eight, nine, or a ten. And we, as a company, ask this question on every survey we give, whether it's a community survey, a building project survey, and those eight, nines, and tens aren't just happy. They're very verbal about how happy they are about their child's experience and their experience at the school. So they're kind of your cheerleaders, and you have over half your parents in that category. So that's your parent report. Do you have any questions about the parent report before I move to the staff report?
No, I think we're good, Mr. Seber.
Okay, great, so I'm gonna move over to the staff survey. All right, can you confirm that you're seeing this one as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. Same process, background. Two hundred fifty-three employees took the survey for a fifty-one percent participation rate. Very acceptable, our company averages sixty percent. We can study the results by their work location, just like we can study the parent results. We can study the results by position, in position category in the district. Classroom teacher, parent professional, support staff, et cetera. We can study your results by years of experience. So let's talk about the progress we made with the staff. Here's your index page. Again, all five areas grew, and some grew dramatically. Again, we're asking staff questions about the academic, academics in the school, how engaged they feel, how supported they feel, the student experience through their eyes, and the staff's experience through their own eyes. So let's talk about the question-by-question results for the staff. First of all, the workday. This is where I could not be more excited and proud of you. It is very rare to have ten percent or more growth. As I said, we get excited when we see steady progress of two to three percent. Well, something very intentional happened in Sierra Vista. Our school's student discipline, practice, and policies are effective. Twelve point five percent improvement. The district's seeking input from a broad group of staff members. Nearly ten percent improvement. And it can't be just a survey like this. There must be other things that your leadership are doing to make the district be seen in this light as far as getting input from all the staff. Our staff handles student discipline in a consistent manner, eight percent. And you need to know, most of the reports I've been given lately, behaviors are regressing, because districts are struggling so much with student behavior. I heard the board member talk about the, the teachers' challenges keeping the kids' attention. It's challenging, but your staff are feeling like the kids, that the practices that are in place, keeping the kids accountable for their behavior, are working. The amount of work I'm asked to do is reasonable, manageable. They're feeling much better about their workload, by seven point three percent. Other workday questions. Most days, I look forward to going to work. I feel comfortable sharing input and concerns with my supervisor administrator. This gets down to the building level and department leadership positions. The site administrator-director seeks input from a broad group of staff members. That grew by one point six percent. And then, information important to my work is shared with me in a timely and effective manner, that grew as well. And a couple more workday questions. Our staff does a good job educating our students group, and it was already very high, as you look at the, the scores and the percent agreement. And I feel supported by my supervisor administrator when I make a decision almost identical to last year. Okay, let's talk about their, the environment question. District administration doing what it takes to make our districts successful. Ten percent growth. Again, I would love to have a deeper conversation about how you're accomplishing some of these things, because I don't often see this. District communication is timely. Six point six percent growth. All students in our school are respected for their values and beliefs. Four point four percent growth. And in the last year, I've received useful feedback on my work to help me improve my work. Four point four percent growth there as well. The site administrator-director is timely. Three point four percent growth. I'm recognized when I do a good job. More good growth. I feel safe at work, with always a nice, strong area, and it only got stronger. The site administrator-director is doing what it takes to make our site and department successful. Two point two percent growth. The district is heading in the right direction. I have training and support to work with students from different backgrounds, and you have a diverse student body. Unlike many of our clients in Minnesota, Wisconsin, where they have a, they're, they're not as, nearly as diverse as you. The site administrator-director's heading in the right direction. The school board is doing what it takes to make our district successful. Some growth there, modest growth there. And then, the only thing that regressed on the environment scores is I have opportunities for training and professional development to improve my work. That regressed by three point one percent from last year. And finally, how supported do they feel? Well, the social-emotional needs of all students being met, and there's a nationwide mental health crisis that continues to be a challenge with a shortage of counselors and psychologists. Sierra Vista, you grew that by six point four percent. All students in our school are given equal opportunities to learn and experience success within those diverse populations. Four point seven percent growth. Our school supports students from diverse backgrounds. Nice growth once again. An area where a lot of districts are struggling is how their parents and community perceive them and how supportive the staff feel about the, the, the parents and the community. You had nice growth there, three point four percent. Our school has a process to ensure every student has at least a connection with at least one adult at school. That connectivity, that mentorship, two point six percent growth. I have the technology I knew I needed to do my job well. That improved by one point eight percent. Staff input being valued, one point one percent. And then I have access to technologies from CoreDigm, one percent. And I would, I would give that a glowing score for your efforts for me tonight. Thank you so much. I have healthy working relationships with my coworkers, very similar to last year, but also very, very high last year. And then there's two other questions that regressed from last year. Pay practices, only by one Pay practices, only by a one hundredth, but again, well below the three, three point zero median score and the agreement percent continues to, to suffer. And I, I know this is a nationwide epidemic too, as far as pay, funding, all those things. And then along with that, related to resources. I have the materials and supplies I need to do my job well. That regressed by two point seven percent. As we talk about supporting students with diverse backgrounds, we break out the equal opportunities question into economic background. Rate growth, five point six percent. Cultural background grew by four point six percent. Racial background, three point eight percent growth. Gender, three point three. And probably the most challenging area for many districts, special, students with special needs. That even grew by two point seven percent. So tremendous efforts on equalizing opportunities for kids. So, bottom five scores on our rating scale. I'll pause and let you take those in. And then your top five were on the ratings, on the rating scale. Lots of scores well above four. And then, let's talk about percentage change. The five questions that improved the least or regressed slightly. And a couple areas a little bit more than slightly. But. Also worthy of celebration. Conserved work must have been done in these areas because we don't see this very often. Discipline, district administration. Workload, all very hard things to move, much less move this much. And again, the closing question for our staff. Something that, uh, leadership obviously takes very seriously is recommending the district as a place of employment. And it's on the minds of your parents too, retaining high-quality staff. You grew by two point eight percent here as well. From five point six-six to five point eight-two. So, again, I have to tell you, this is one of the more remarkable success stories. Um, you know, it, it, sometimes it's easy to grow from year one to year two. And then it slows down from year to, two to year three. But not necessarily in Sierra Vista. A handful of areas that regressed, but lots, tremendous growth with your parents and your staff. So congratulations. Any questions on the second report?
Anyone have any questions? Looks like Mrs. Sheriff does.
Um, I first, um, all of those amazing scores and the growth is, it's just a real testament to all of our district staff. So. Huge, huge heartfelt thanks to all of you and how hard you work every day. Um. I, I. Some of the negative scores or the scores that declined, they're pretty clear what we need to do, right? Pay.
Yeah.
Resources, professional, they're pretty clear. I'm a bit con, I'm wondering if you have any suggestions when we look at all of the, the growth and the improvement. But then in the first negative scores we got about district direction and the role of the board.
Yeah.
Um, that's just, it's really unclear what that might be referring to. Do you have any suggestions or recommendations on how we can? Potentially drill down into that to get some more like. Di- direction on, on what we're doing well or not doing well?
I sure can. Now, I, you may remember this, but we do offer comment analyses. And we offer free-form comments for you. We don't ever start with them because there are, within all those hundreds of comments from the parents and the staff. There are some one-offs and some opportunities to rant. And we, we study them all, we gather them all. But we have a new report that we have done, um, and refined where we do a comments analysis for you. And we will drill down and hunt out comments related to areas that have regressed. And so what I can offer you is, I always say when I come to these meetings, I'm just getting started. These are your summary reports and we always start with the data. And I love it when you ask a question like this, because this is where I want to serve you well. We can go back and we can drill down in the comments. And try to find some themes that tell the story in more detail about why scores have regressed. And I'd be glad to do that. Um, that is my job as your, as your project manager is to come back to you. With a deeper understanding of why some of the scores aren't what they are. We don't start with comments, we come back to the comments. Once you've said to me, hmm. This score is unacceptable for the Sierra Vista standard. We're concerned about this one. Can you seek, help us with a deeper understanding? I can do that. I can go into all the comments. And we have the software that'll help with, uh, help us sort out the comment, to help tell that story for you. So, that will be on my to-do list. And I'll report that back to Terry and her administrative team. I can come back to a board meeting. And help you with that. But what I'll do is, the closing comments on both surveys is. What do you think are the district's significant strengths? And what are some areas that the district could improve? And I will study those comments and do a search based on board, board leadership, district direction. And I can come back to you with some comments productively, but also anonymously. We'll, we'll summarize it into topics, themes, areas. Of concern based on the question.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Very good. Thank you for that. And I'll just echo what Mrs. Sheriff said. Um, just thanking our staff and administrators, Mrs. Romo, um, for helping get those scores up.
All right. Any other questions? I want to be available to you, but I also know I'm not the only topic on your agenda tonight, so.
I, I just wanted to make a comment. It's not a question. I've been in the school district for forty-seven years. And I am just in awe of the support the teachers have for one another. And their ability to help one another and have someone that they can go to. To get some of their, their questions answered. I think that kind of teamwork is something that I needed to see and hear. And I'm very, I'm very impressed with what's happening here. And to me, it's a selling point to the community. If they could see these figures and how you rated yourselves and. The rapport that you have and the ability to work together. We need to hear this more often. We, we tend to hear the negative more than the positive. So I think it's a wonderful selling point. And, and I agree with, I'm new to the board and so I have a lot to learn. And, and it's, we're all in a place where we need to be trainable and teachable and to grow. So I think the fact that the board is open to whatever suggestions you would make to help us. In those areas of weakness, yay, we appreciate that.
Yeah. I would tell you right now, I would tell you, my first takeaway though is, because I'm doing a lot of these right now, um, this staff and parent survey are, are top two selling. Products, and I don't like to talk sales because I'm an educator, I'm not a salesman. I'm a former superintendent of ten years, but. To that end. I think what's happening as I give feedback to boards. I think elected officials right now. And it doesn't, it doesn't matter if it's federal, state, or local school board. They're just seen in a negative light right now. Just because right now we're in such bipolar political turmoil. And I'm not gonna talk about leaning left or right, I'm just gonna say. We are divided as a country. And the trickle-down has been all the way to school boards. There are very few school boards where I've seen anything but regression lately. And I think it's just because. Citizens are kind of fed up with all elected officials. I will absolutely drill down for you and see what I can find. But only if I can find something tangible and productive. Because I would tell you, right now, it just kind of comes with the elected position. Because society is down on elected officials universally. That would be my first guess. But I'm gonna work on this for you, and we'll come back from Thanksgiving break with some takeaways that I can share with Terry. And if you want me to zoom into a work session, it would be my honor to report it directly to you aboard. I'll talk to Terry about that, but. Um, this won't take me long, couple days, and I'll through, through the parent results and the findings. Um, I don't know that that would be needed with the staff. Areas of regression, because I know that your leadership team has ideas already about professional development, because I already met with them. And quite honestly, pay. Budgets are tight, and I'm sure you're doing the best you can with material supplies and pay. There's no printing machine in the back copy room to print more money. Um, but if you do want me to drill down, I can, but I, I, otherwise, I'm gonna be really working on that parent report for you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seavers.
But I would like to echo, your point is well-taken about the positive things in Sierra Vista, and it's not from the staff. This is one of the most remarkable steadily growing parent analyses I've had the opportunity to do this entire calendar year. I mean, to all those sixes and five percent changes across the board. And very few that re, I mean, that was, that's a strong, your parents are happy too. And this is not a time where parents are very happy either. I'll be honest.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations. I'll circle back to you. Let's keep working together and, uh, targeting improvement, but hey. Be sure to celebrate and be proud of those strengths, okay? Happy, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Have a good night.
Good night. Thank you for your help, Bryn.
Of course. Bye-bye. All right, so we will move on to the next item on our agenda, and that would be public comments. And we do not have any tonight. And so that would move us on to our consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
As mentioned before, because of our, our budget constraints, I, I do not concur with the, um. Extra-duty supplements that are authorized, so I will abstain.
And anyone else, any comments? Not hearing any. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
And passes four zero with one extension. All right. And next item on our agenda would be consolidation of Bella Vista Elementary School. It is recommended that the board vote to approve the consolidation of Bella Vista Elementary. With another elementary school to be determined at a later date.
The governing board and administration have met all legal requirements for considering the consolidation of a school. We've done things such as board meetings. This actually started, this conversation started last school year under Dr. Holmes. Um, I've done board meetings as well as we, um, town, had a town hall. During the town hall, discussion was held regarding various concerns which were understood and addressed by administration. And the board during the, um, a following work session. Due to the feedback received from the public and the board, administration recommends approval of the consolidation of Bella Vista Elementary School. With another elementary site to be decided after receiving survey results from the families at Bella Vista regarding the location. Um, in the alternative, the board may also vote to approve the above as stated and additionally direct myself to bring forward more schools for consolidation. Closure at a later date.
Can I get a motion?
I move that the board approve the consolidation of Bella Vista Elementary School. With another elementary school to be determined at a later date.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at this time?
Just a quick clarifying question. The only thing to be determined at a later date is into which school?
Correct. One of the things that we heard from the families that attended our town hall, um, was. Maybe looking at a school that was closer to them, um, that would allow, you know, at least some of our students to be able to walk to school. Um, and so, um, I feel like what we all heard and from the conversation I heard you all, um, at your work session was. Um, to go back to specifically our Bella Vista families and give them a choice of the schools, um, that's. And let them vote on which, uh, schools that they would like to see, um, Bella Vista be combined with.
Thank you. And I'll just kind of add to that. So, kind of the way it reads and the way the motion was done. That we are not considering at this time, another elementary school to close. We're, that may be later on down the road.
It was just a conversation. We wanted to leave that as an option for you all. I, I think I've, I've been clear why. And I, anyone who knows me and, and knows how much I love this community. Having to consolidate any of these schools is extremely hard on me. Um, and while I know I, I, you know, it was on the news today up in Tucson, closing, you know, multiple schools and, and just coming out and saying, these are the schools that are closing. Um, and not having conversations and not sharing all the research necessarily behind it. Um, we've been working on this for a long time, and I would really prefer to only close one at this time.
Thank you. And any other discussion at this time? All right, hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
I would suggest a roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you, Bryn. All right, so we'll do a roll call vote, so let's back that up a minute. Um, so we'll start with Mrs. Rodford.
I agree.
Mr. Conroy?
Concur.
Mrs. Sheriff?
Aye.
Mrs. Robinson?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And that passes five zero. And so we'll move on to the next item, and that would be approval of the reconfiguration of Wachuka Mountain Elementary, K.A. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action to approve the reconfiguration of Wachuka Mountain Elementary School.
In an effort to provide, um, more choice for our families, Wachuka Mountain Elementary School would need to be reconfigured, um, by, at ADE to reflect the proper use of space. Exit designation in order for it to be utilized as a kindergarten through eighth grade school. Administration recommends approval.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. We'll do a roll call vote. Um, Mrs. Rodford, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Conroy?
Concur.
Mrs. Sheriff?
Aye.
Mrs. Robinson?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Um, passes five zero. And moving on to the next item would be request approval of the resignation of professional staff member, Shaleen Nadee. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding a request for resignation from professional staff member, Shaleen Nadee.
Shaleen Nadee submitted her resignation on November second, twenty twenty-five, effective immediately. Supporting documentation is on file in the Human Resources Office. Administration recommends approval of Shaleen Nadee's resignation.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. And next item would be a waiver of policy, G C Q C, for professional staff member, Shaleen Nadee. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding a request for waiver of liquidated damages pursuant to policy and regulations. G C Q C, resignation of professional staff member, Shaleen Nadee.
Shaleen Nadee submitted her request for waiver of the liquidated damages in the amount of one thousand pursuant to policy and regulation. G C Q C, resignation of professional staff members. This does not meet the criteria. Supporting documentation was received but does not apply.
Can I get a motion?
I move that the waiver request be denied.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
All right, um, passes three two. Moving on to the next item, that would be a leave of absence extension request from professional staff member, Brenda Jones. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding a request for an extension to an existing leave from professional staff member, Brenda Jones. Teacher. The request is for an extension of her leave from January third, twenty twenty-six to May twenty-second, twenty twenty-six.
Brenda Jones has been on an approved Family Medical Leave Act from September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five with an expiration date of January second, twenty twenty-six. She is requesting to extend this leave from January third, twenty twenty-six to May twenty-second, twenty twenty-six. Which would be for an additional twenty weeks of intermittent leave. Documentation regarding this request is on file with the Human. Documentation regarding this request is on file with the Human Resources Office. As per district policy, the governing board must approve leave of absence requests that exceed twelve weeks. Administration recommends approval of Brenda Jones's request.
We concur with that.
So, do you want to give me a motion? We haven't, we're not ready to.
Oh, okay. Well, I did read the, the situation behind this. So I, I do make a motion that we.
Approve it?
Approve it, yes.
Very good. I'll second that. So a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes five zero. Next item on our agenda would be proposed revision to the support staff initial wage placement plans due to the Arizona State minimum wage increase. It is recommended that the governing board review and take action regarding the proposed revisions to the support staff initial wage placement plans due to the Arizona State minimum wage increase.
The proposed revisions to the support staff initial wage placement plans reflect the required Arizona State minimum wage increase effective January first, twenty twenty-six, from fourteen seventy to fifteen fifteen per hour. The following support staff initial wage placement plans will be effective, affected. Clerical, paraprofessional, security, information management, maintenance, and custodial. Administration recommends approval.
So move.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just for clarification, the plan at this time is to only increase people up to that minimum wage if required. It's not an across-the-board increase of whatever that amount is.
That is correct. So any support staff who fall at, below the fifteen fifteen will be increased for January first.
And if it'd be allowable, I'd like to add that we would like to get back to where we could do it for everyone. We do understand that this does cause compression. It's just with our budget, we are not able to do that at this time. We can only do what's required by law at this time.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes five zero. And moving on to our next item, that would be acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the governing board accept with gratitude the following donations as read by district administration.
The following donation was received. Tennis gear for the Boyina Boys and Girls Tennis Teams valuing one thousand dollars from Carrie Aguilon with Farmers Insurance. And a thousand dollars from Stephen and Lauren O'Neil for JCMS Music Department for needed instrument repairs and sheet music. Administration recommends approval with gratitude.
So move with gratitude.
I'll second that with gratitude. Do you have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes five zero. The next item would be information and discussion items. Items that we may discuss, but would not vote. Anybody have any information or discussion items at this time? All right. Not hearing any. We will move on to the request for future agenda items. Does anybody have any requests for future agenda?
Well, as you pointed out last time, I wasn't here, so that's why you guys didn't get any. But I'm, I'm here now. So we need to schedule, I'll be reaching out to all the board, we need to schedule another executive session for contract discussion regarding Mrs. Romo. Additionally, just a heads up, we only have one meeting December, and that is December second. But commonly, we may have a very, very brief meeting that we might have to schedule to go over PA approval for staff members that we may hire between December second and our winter break. Additionally, we have received quite a number of ASBA policy provisions, so I will get those consolidated down and go over, you know, get it prepared as we did last time, and then suggest a work session date. So you can all be looking forward to that email from me. It is of a similar size as to last time, so quite, quite a bit of grief.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Any requests for agenda items? All right. Hearing done. I would move on to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
And you all seconded.
Us.
Why did you anyway?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes five zero. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night. Happy Thanksgiving.